Live stream.
Stream.
Look pretty.
Just past the case.
Don't be bad thinking where you stand sometimes, you just get the back of your head. Okay, so now we're live, so call the meeting to order, additions to the agenda.
Candies for food.
Sorry, I have an addition of, or request to put something on the website.
And eight six. So the addition of eight five parade vote and eight six town website.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Very none, somebody wished to move the additions, the agenda's amended. Law. Any question on law's motion? Very none, call question. It is carried out. Okay, moving on to the council meeting. June the tenth, any questions, errors, or missions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Georgely moves it. Any question on Georgely's motion? Very none, call question. Oh, call question, sorry.
Sorry, I was making the wrong spot on the line.
Oh, okay.
So we'll hear that. Sorry.
It's okay. Okay, it's carried out. Okay, moving on to delegation, so if you would like to come up to the front, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So this little V bit update. So we had our AGM at the end of May, which was attended by myself and Gray, and Laura, and Sudeo. And among the other things with V bit business was on the table was the status of V bit and what we should do with V bits. And the decision that we made, that we came to was that we were not going to close the book on V bit. We are going to, it's not going to be dormant, but it'll kind of be, we'll hold meetings as required, but we will stick within the brand alignment. And so projects that come up or projects that we source out that meet with the brand alignment criteria, we will pursue and we will look out as a group. We will look for new committee members and try and revitalize V bit a little bit because we believe in the brand plan and we believe that there's been good things that have come out of it over the years and none of us are really prepared to let it to rest yet. So that's kind of where we came to at the end of the AGM.
Yep.
Well, thanks, Gail. Yes, I was at that meeting too and as prepared to, I had a speech sort of made up and it was going to be the farewell tour sort of thing, but they convinced me that we should carry on. And she has some good points, there is a lot of people that are invested in this and it's a good idea, so we were going to carry on with it. And it is kind of like a twenty dollar bill that you find in your jacket sort of thing. You pull it out and you realize, oh, it's twenty dollars, you get pretty excited about it, but you realize that you, you know, hopefully it's your own money anyway, so it's already spent. So that's kind of where we're at with the branding plan. It's already paid for and we own it. So just a brief review, the brand itself is to, this is an economic development plan. So it's to make use of the already existing Star Trek brand to spark innovation in technology, to boost economic development in the Vulcan County. So to make this community stand out and boost economic growth. So that's kind of what we all want. And so no matter what you do, you're still going to be branded with something. You could don't do anything, you're going to attract the brand, but it's the things that you do that will make the brand. And it's kind of like a, it's sort of two sides to the brand part. Like it's either you're the cow and you've been branded and it kind of hurts and you're not sure exactly what it says, but you've got the brand. But the cowboy from the outside sees the brand and understands what's going on. So it's, it's kind of the, we have to think of that in sort of two perspectives there. And then, there's one about the Calgary Stampede, I'm not sure if I got that up there. I don't think it's up there at all, but you know what I mean? When you go into Calgary, you'll see the new signs that says Calgary, be part of the energy. I don't know if you've noticed them. So that's, I think it was in two thousand and fifteen, they sort of had a retooling of their branding. And so there's a whole toolkit of them, like if you go on the internet. And some of them are for economic development and some of them for tourism. So the tourism part actually has a little cowboy hat above the symbol sort of thing.
The Stetson.
The Stetson. So that indicates their stampede thing, which is their, you know.
Their huge.
Yeah. It's their huge draw and their western heritage sort of thing. But be part of the energy is for the people that are actually branded in the city sort of thing. So they feel that they're part of the community and then they also attract new people to it. And so they don't have to be reminded of the cowboy hat all the time or wear their cowboy things with their pants tucked in all year. So it's, and it's kind of like you guys and you've done a great, great job of doing this with the Star Trek thing. You've kept it alive and you've done it very tastefully and professionally. And it's a matter of walking the block. So as soon as you do those things, you have a float and you have a Starship Enterprise, then that really gathers attention and you've got the brand. So, yeah, and you've got the help of CBS advertising to keep, you know, the idea of Vulcan and Star Trek alive. You've got a huge budget, I don't know what they spend on advertising, but you have that in your pocket because that's part of your brand, is connect with that. And jumping around a bit, but this is, this thing that they created with the brand identity. So it's got the logos and it's sort of, this is the CBS connection that makes you, you know, put up your logo legally sort of thing and have all the Star Trek things without getting you huge problems. So this is, this is your ticket to connecting with CBS, you know, multi-billion dollar community sort of thing. So this is incredibly important, I mean, that's part of the stuff that you own. So, yeah, so like I said, the Star Trek thing from the outside is really noticed. Your float, apparently it's really well respected in the Calgary Stampede parade and they want it back again. So understand next year, right, that you're going to do that?
Vote too, yeah.
And I heard a thing on CBC Radio under the influence, I don't know if you guys got that thing, but they talked about this Terry O'Reilly and he used Vulcan as an example. And again, it was, he cited the two celebrations, the Spock days in the Vulcan. And again, you guys are walking the block and you're actually doing something. You're not just saying, you know, we're, so this is, that's great. So how do you connect this with economic development, right? Because this is kind of what we want and is tourism enough to sort of develop that? And if someone not, so that's why we had Roger Brooks come in here and take the technology part to the Star Trek. So we invite economic development, just as Calgary did with their, you know, be part of the entity, not so much the cowboy thing, but more of the energetic city. So does it work? The tech part? And I'd say yes, in ways, and sometimes when you think about it, it's kind of surprising, but it does work. But sometimes the people of Vulcan maybe don't understand the brand for them inside. But you, I've talked to several companies and people about the brand thing and they get it immediately sort of thing. You have Star Trek and you just add tech into that. It's just a natural thing and you don't have to explain anything. I met a young mother who was running on our last provincial election. And when she heard I was from Vulcan, she said, oh yeah, that's the community with the high-speed internet. So that means that she's picking up on that signal of the high-speed internet. She probably knew about the Star Trek thing, but doesn't matter. And we have a business in Main Street that was attracted to Vulcan because they can set up high-speed internet and have a business here. And my recent experience with the University of Calgary solar car team, I'm not sure if they have that picture up there, of the car. So this is, these are all engineering students from the University of Calgary and they built this solar car to race in, they do laps and see how far it can go on a battery charge and charged by the sun. So these guys were, well, they were late for the parade, which is unfortunate, some kind of mix-up with the garage or something, but they were a tech town and they answered lots of questions and it was really cool to have them there. But they had a comment, they really liked your streetlights. They thought your streetlights were really cool because they, you know, because it was just innovative and that caught their attention right away. And then there was quite a few of them that were really interested in the solar park because they had come into town and they said, what is that place down the road there with all the solar panels and the benches and what, why is that place? And they said, oh, it's the solar park. And they said, we have to get down there. So as soon as they finished the tech town, they rolled their car down and they parked here and had that. And this is, I don't know, to me, this sums it out because again, it's, you're walking the block with technology and you've attracted some attention with it. And it's, you know, this could lead to other things and it's important to sort of follow up on these possibilities. I mean, these guys might be interested in the data that comes from the solar farm or, you know, even following them on their race, that I think they're racing next couple of weeks somewhere, you know, just to follow them and get that connection. So from the inside, people in Vulcan sort of realize that stuff is going on, the technology. And then you're also attracting other people. So there's lots of assets that we have already with the branding plan. And this is, this is some of them, with the CBS, and then we have the plan and your tourism center, you know. I mean, that's a wonderful asset just by itself because it's built like that. And then your events, the Spock days in the Vulcan, again, walking the block. And then the solar park itself and then your plan project south of town, I'm not sure how that's going. We probably can't talk about it so much, but it's, but that's going to be accent, or a, a, accent. And then also the Sawag program, if that ever takes place, that's going to be a huge thing. And then we have, there's a logos, is there a thing with logos there? So this is, this is the other thing that's developed through the branding plan. And you can see that it's, they sort of clumped the county together and they sort of used similar fonts and brands to sort of tie things together. So when you're, when you're attracted to a business in Arrowood, say, and set up a business in Arrowood, that's a good thing for Vulcan because we're sort of all in this together. So that's, and we have all these great little towns as well around us with the lakes and the facilities and the training, you know, it's, that's a real asset. Never mind the Majorville Karen thing, which is, which is huge in itself. And then also what we have is people like Gail that have gone to other places. She now works on the Health and Wellness Foundation. And again, that was spun directly off of the branding plan is to have that support and.
One of the pillars, yeah.
One of the pillars. And that's, that's what it's about, exploring those pillars in agriculture, in education, in environment, and taking those pillars and exploring them. Yes, and the county thing, yeah, so there's, so there's some challenges that I can see that we have. And again, one of them is just communicating with the people of Vulcan inside the brand sort of thing to understand what that means. You might want to post how much you save electricity with the LED lights, you know, with the, you know, your conversion of streetlights in town because I think you've done a lot of, I can see that.
That was a Ford's project.
Okay, so I mean, so people might, if you convert that to dollars, that might mean something to the people of Vulcan sort of thing. But for the people from the solar car thing, they just think it's cool. But for the people of Vulcan, they may want to know how much electricity that actually saves. So that's kind of working inside the brand. And with this, this sort of V bit sort of stepping back, we're letting you guys take the reins of this as well and I would hope you'd step up to it. One of the things I never liked about the brand part is our tagline. Like the Calgary tagline is really short, be part of the energy. It's a.
A call to action.
Yeah, and it's a call to action. So there's several other taglines that are listed in this book and we just, for some reason, picked out one about the being the most technologically advanced small community in Canada. And to me, that's kind of awkward and I don't know, if I was going forward with it, I would change it to something that's, that's more concise and try to.
It's like a call to action.
Yeah.
Yeah, just get short.
Yeah. And again, you don't have to say anything about Star Trek because CBS does that already. You just have to indicate just subtly with your, you know, with your, with anything. The tourism part, this is a really key, important connector for the brand because it connects the tourists coming into town and the people that want to stay in town and find that economic development. And it could be in Milo or Champion or other places. So when you walk into the tourist center, you should be connected to those economic opportunities in what the assets that Vulcan has and the assets that the other communities have. And going the same way as well too, when you take a train ride at Aston Crossing, you should be introduced to the, you know, the sights and the tourism of the Vulcan County. And just a, just a news story from Canal Flats in DC. They're, they're sort of saying that we're hoping for business with a little tech community. They've started a little tech center and they're, they're just saying that, okay, we're a little town here, but we have high-speed internet, we're well-connected and we want to attract little tech communities to our community. And that kind of sounds like what we were trying to do here as well too. The discovery center, I think that's sort of, I think that's something that is really important to pursue, even if it's down the line, have a piece of land or a vision for that somewhere down the line. And it could be even a small conventional hotel thing or it could be a larger facility for sports and other things down the road. So I think it's important to.
Say that.
And there's a lot of people still in Vulcan that really like that idea of a discovery center and moving towards that. So it's, the moving towards that, I think, is the important part. Yeah, and the other things that we can do is to connect, like you say, with the solar car team or right now, we're sort of inundated almost with renewable resources, but wind and solar, it's just kind of sort of come on us and we have major international players right in this county and they may be interested in some workshops or some, you know, some mini conventions or something to attract attention. So, yeah, that kind of sums up what I'm going to say. And if you have any questions or anything, yeah.
No, I mean, I just think as far as when you were speaking about tourists, I had a friend here from Swift Current on the weekend and we took in quite a bit of the porch fest, which was fantastic. But she wanted to do all the tourist stuff, like, you know, she's been here to visit me a few times, but we had to go have the picture at the truck station and, you know, so it's still a very, it's still a very valuable, they're very valuable assets for our community because tiny little county Saskatchewan and they know all about it, you know, and they come here and they want their photograph taken there. So that just kind of solidified to me that, you know, the value that it has and the reach for that is still really, really important for our community. So I think that, yeah, we need to work towards keeping things, supporting whatever we can.
So I would suggest to council as a, as a group or in private or something that you, you know, explore these ideas and talk about it. Is this something that you want to move forward with or not? So it's, I think it's important for you guys. And then also the county connection as well too, because that's, that's a vital part of this whole thing as well too, having that kind of connection. And I will be speaking to them as well too next month and I'll just get them up to speed as well too and hopefully we can have some melding.
Okay. Well, thank you for taking the time to come. Is there any questions for Gray or?
I guess thank you for doing all of the legwork.
Well, you're welcome. I guess we're saying that we're sort of passing this on.
We kind of noticed that. That's great.
And I think there's several, some drive things that we have, all of the V bit stuff as well, like this as well too. Because there was somebody asking just last month, they said, is there a digital copy? They were making some kind of poster or something and they.
Yes, well, I think, you know, the branding, you know, initiative, I think was, I mean, I think the town started long before that, but, you know, you can see that we have now, you know, brought it into council chambers too and embraced it by, you know, televising our council meetings, you know, going to electronic voting, going to a different format of our process. So I think, you know, it's something that we keep on promoting and moving. Unfortunately, the biggest problem with a lot of this stuff is there is a, there is a dollars and cents to it. And so I think as we move forward, we just have to keep our eye on the ball and just keep it rolling.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. And well, thank you very much for taking the time to come and see us tonight and appreciate, like Lauren said, all the stuff that the group has done over the years and, you know, some of the visions that have been thrown on the table and, yeah, well, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or you go home and watch it on TV.
Oh, and watch it on TV.
I like keeping a pocket from sharing my shoes.
Okay. Anyways, thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Yeah, good night. Yeah, good night. Okay, moving on to six one, cancellation of firefighter games. Unfortunately, they didn't have enough numbers to put on this year, but I think they'll probably try for it again next year. And so, then the next one is a letter from the minister. I think it's kind of nice to see that we're starting to get some correspondence from them right away and any questions on that one there?
Are you not sleeping up there?
I'm not sure how much they're sleeping, they get because I think they're, right now, they're staying awake quite a bit.
So they haven't really said it's staying the same, but they haven't said it's not.
No, I, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so it's.
I think that until we, until they do the budget, you know, I think.
But we won't know anything.
That's right. You know, stats, quotes, this, you know, I think they haven't come up and said no to it either. So it's, I think it's very positive. Anyway, moving on to the six three, the Old Man River Regional Services Commission. So they've created this group now and so I guess that it's in place or we've signed on. So probably. The members are in place of the start hearing. So if there's any hearings, we'll hear from them. Any question on that one? Okay, moving on to Saturday, this is the one that's got a price tag.
So this is just for council information. Right now, I didn't get Doral's permission for this on, based on the conversation at council for the last meeting about looking at this while they're, Alberta Transportation is doing Highway twenty-three. It's not something to budget for, it's not something that we planned for, but it was talked about in our stormwater drainage plan off of the industrial subdivision. So I sent a quick email off to them to get things started on it. They, of course, have all the engineering background, so they did some preliminary. They will come with a budget estimate for council approval, but based on the timeframe, I kind of want you guys to know what kind of dollar figures are being thrown around, where it's at. This is by no means official, like what he says on the bottom. He will come with a good cost estimate, but as you know, it's going to have a fairly quick turnaround. You're either going to decide you're going to do it or you're not because transportation is already going by. So if we want to take advantage of their construction group and that while they're in the area, that's where we think that we're going to find a pretty good economy scale on it because these guys are already going through, they're already redoing the ditches. So if we can get them to dig them out to meet our specs and we can put the log strings in when they go across Main Street and they're going to repave that area anyway, that's where we're going.
Yeah, it's a win-win theoretically, but again, it's one of those win-wins and have a price tag to it, so.
The way I'm looking at it and budgeting it, it's like the railroad tracks. We didn't know it was coming, but it's something that's in our plan to do long-term anyway. So this was more for your information so that you knew what dollar figures were.
And also too, you know, like, you know, they're going to do some lane widening in that area too. So, you know, it just makes sense that if they're in there with their equipment, that, you know, they'd probably be able to do it, we would have mobility mobilization costs to it, you know, theoretically. So it should work out to be a.
We got noticed, they're moving ahead, we got noticed today that they needed a salvage notification immediately. So the lights that are out there, the big tall streetlights, they're actually being removed. They need the town's permission because, of course, we originally requested them. So they're going to remove them and, of course, move them for the lane widening and then put them back up. So we had to sign off on the salvage of them and they wanted it back almost immediately, so.
So I think we'll, we'll see within the next council meeting that there'll probably be something more concrete on the pricing and, again, it's going to be an impact to the community too because, you know, the intersection will be closed for a period of time while they do some of that work and inconvenienced a bit, but I mean, we do still have another great entrance to the south and so probably when one closes, the other one opens, it stays open, so. So any questions on this in here, Tom? Oh, yeah, Tom, your question?
Just when they do work on that, is that going to have any effect on our emergency vehicles?
Shouldn't.
Like if there's a train coming through, but now that they're working on the one for their south and us, we should be okay, right?
Yes, and we haven't talked to them a hundred percent. There was the idea of for that entrance, closing half and doing half and then doing the other half, so.
Yeah, I think that, you know.
The guys that are doing it are used to routing traffic.
Yeah, like with any paving job, there's going to be some inconveniences, you know, as going through and I would imagine they'll probably do two lifts, you know, so they'll do part of one side and then, you know, part of the other and then they'll, you know, a week later they'll come back and do the other part. So it's going to be a road that's going to be inconvenienced because they're going all the way from the Bird Sanctuary Road, oh, no, sorry, Coleman Road.
Coleman.
All the way to Corner Store. So I mean, there's, you know, almost twenty miles of road that's going to be, you know, a lift go on, so. But, you know.
We got to catch them in that small window that they'll be here.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, we've been talking about this for a couple, three or four years, about, you know, that it needed to be done and this is an opportunity to do it before they pave it and then we go and rip it up and do it again. So the only problem is, it's like Kim said, it's one of those, you know, bittersweet poison pills that we get because there is a cost allocation to it too, so it's going to affect our budget a little bit. But we do have some contingency money that we.
And that's the reason why Arlen started that email with that, that he feels that they can do it under two thousand five hundred thousand because my first go-to was contingency reserve for council, which that's the maximum we have. But we also have some federal gas tax funding that we'll, that we can use grant funding for a portion of this as well, if not all.
So anyway, it's, it's just a project that we've talked about, so, but anyway.
First caller, or one of those groups who are out marking.
Yeah, no, they've been, yeah, there's been some engineering done in that and you'll see lots of stuff like that going on around too.
Our engineers will be on site here on Thursday to look at that project plus the twenty twenty street program as well.
So are the streetlights theirs or ours? Like, do they belong to Alberta Transportation or?
They're like, they're like the rest of the streetlights in town, they're owned by Fordis and we pay for them. So we made the request to have them. So we made the request to have them. Uh, the new ones will be owned by Alberta Transportation.
And, and they're putting new ones up?
They're putting new poles up.
Okay. So any other questions? Hearing that, uh, is there any, have you heard anything on those four items? If not, somebody wish to file the correspondence. Bob? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing that, I'll call a question. Okay, it's carried. Okay, moving on to cash ports.
Okay.
Your turn.
Is this where we should be at this end of the year? Cause before the.
The majority of the taxes are coming in in June. So, and we've, yeah, yeah, the last couple, the last couple of days have been, been very busy here at the office, which is good.
Okay, I would move that we filed this for information.
Okay, Laura moves the cash statement. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing that, I'll call a question. And it's just the votes unanimous with not quite yet. Just waiting for lots.
Oh, lots.
Oh, there it is. Okay, it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the other cash, here's the summary, you're the lead.
Is Laura yet to ask the question?
Yeah, uh, as you can see, uh, the only things that really stand out in here are the transfers that we made because of the budget. So those transfers we made, majority of it unless there's a line item specific that, anybody has questions on it? It's pretty straightforward.
No?
How are the, I guess the school taxes, I just kind of thought that they all came out at once, like they could.
No, quarterly, quarterly. Yeah, so we collect them all at once. They, we collect them on everybody's taxes and we pay them. That's one of the things about the quarterly that's very hard, is we start paying them before we start collecting. So, and without a provincial budget, we don't really know exactly what they are. So we base that number on last year's number. So it's, it's a tough one to.
So could you be into three quarters by the time we know?
We, this year we very well could be.
I, I know the first year, the first time too, in the last, it was the same way after the first, you know, last election, I should say.
They make, if, if it does go up significantly, they'll want it on the last quarterly contract, which will put us in a spot if we haven't collected it. But that's the chance we take.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? If not, somebody wish to move that? Laura? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing that, I'll call a question. And that's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to current business, which is the county cruises requests for street closure and the use of the rodeo ground area.
And this is the yearly one?
Yeah, the request is same as last year.
Last year? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Um, I was just going to ask, can we have this in two motions? Cause there are four part of it, but not the other part of it.
Sure. Um, the, last year they used it two weekends, I think.
Yes, they did. This, this year it's back to one.
Okay. Okay, so somebody wish to move the first one, which is the street closure for the, okay, Paul moves. With the street closure. Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing that, I'll call a question. Okay, it's carried. Okay, moving on to the next one. Does somebody wish to move the, are able to use the rodeo grounds? Laura? Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing that, I'll call a question. It's taking a little longer because we split it now. Okay, and it is carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to eight up two, the lives funding pool concession agreement. This is similar to what we have just one every year.
I just had one question. It said, um, for a period of approximately two months, and it's from the end of May till the end of August.
Which is the four.
Three months, yeah, about.
Three and a, little bit, yeah.
Now, it's okay to have a word like this?
Yeah, so the, uh, the actual motion will be just enter into an agreement with Rise and Shine for the operation of the concession.
From that time, right?
Yeah, so from May twenty-eighth till August twenty-ninth.
So are they there already?
Yeah, they've, they've had the, the, this for, uh, this is quite a few years. And, uh, we keep doing new agreements. In the future, we're going to probably just ask for an extension rather than giving you the whole agreement over and over and over. It's been mutually beneficial to both organizations.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Bob?
Just out of curiosity sake, I, I guess it just must not make economical sense to have it open on the weekend. Like it's only Monday to Friday. I would have thought that the weekends would have been a good time to open, or is that their?
And we let Rise and Shine do that. Yeah, they set, they set their own hours.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me, over the years, um, they've tried lots of different methods to keep the facility, you know, open. You know, when it was, I think at the very beginning, we used our own staffing and it just, um, this was much more successful and was a win-win for both parties. So.
We had a private contractor come in for a couple of years that was successful. And then for a few years it stayed closed. There was nobody interested in actually operating, even with, even with relatively no rent on the, so. So we've had several different models. I, I believe Rise and Shine's been there for five or six years now.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
And it works well because they also work with, uh, with our recreation department. If we do have an event that comes up, they also can let us use the facility if we can be.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, somebody wish to move this all, you could accept. Any question on Paul's motion? Hearing that, Paul's motion. And that's carried unanimously. Okay, uh, moving on to this, oh, the Highwood Community Futures one. That's the one that Kim kind of sent out a questionnaire to see how everybody felt.
So I, I already emailed this motion if everybody's acceptable, because I did get a majority response from council. So this is a formality of actually making a formal motion, having it documented. So.
Okay, so any question on this?
Is this rather odd that you would ask specifically for it?
They ask every year and it's because we appoint, uh, because we appoint two, uh, members to represent the town, walk among community futures.
Well, because it was a member.
Yes, a member of large and a counselor. So they need to specify for their HGM which one can vote on, on resolutions. They, they send the response every year.
I just thought it was odd because we had someone that was scoring that. I never thought about having the other person.
If Michelle was not available, then the other one that would have been brought forward was to have Barry, you can see he'll be in attendance anyway.
Okay, so somebody wish to, George Lee? Okay, any question on George Lee's motion?
Are you free to do your thing here?
I am going.
Okay. Yeah, that would be the next thing.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing that, I'll call a question. And that's carried unanimously. Okay, now moving on to page four, the disposal of old files.
So you guys see this at the end of every year. Uh, the reason why we're doing it now is we found, uh, someone, we're cleaning up to get ready for, uh, doing our mid-season, uh, to get ready for the year end. Uh, we found a box full of old letters. And so we offered them to the, uh, to the archives. They went through everything and they kept the stuff that they wanted to keep and returned it. And so the stuff that was returned, anything that we, uh, offer for shredding needs to be approved by council. So we need a formal motion. And then what we do is we, uh, we document what was shredded. We sign off on it so that a hundred years from now, somebody can say, when was that stuff disposed of? They can look that you guys made a motion to do it, who we sent to do it, one on the left side and not people on the right. So this is the, just the formal response to ask you for permission to, uh, to dispose of the letters that were returned from the archives.
Here's a motion, huh?
Yep.
Okay, so Laura moves that we dispose of these documents. Any question on Laura's motion? Hearing that, I'll call a question. And that's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to candy for the float.
Well, as we're doing all these parades, do we want to get our candies?
Well, there's two issues that come about is that some parades, you cannot throw candies. So you have somebody having to walk along and hand out. And then the two is we have no budget for candy.
So Paul did, uh, contact me about this. And in the past, when council has, uh, purchased candy for a parade, it's come out of council other line item on the, on the budget. There is currently four thousand dollars available in that budget line item. Well, but you have to remember that comes if you want to do, you have to replace a laptop or you have to, um, basically make.
Make a laptop.
Make, 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 well, if you make adjustments, if, uh, if somebody hems one of your uniforms, those sort of thing, that's what that, uh, that's where that comes from. So there is money there depending on, and my question for Paul was based on that. The council needs to have a discussion on how much money you put towards that. You need to actually have an open conversation rather than there's money in the budget, we'll just play, you know, we'll just buy it up there.
Do we have a rough idea how much will it cost for a parade? I should have asked the lineups.
I think, I believe Laura provided candy a couple of years ago. Did you know?
Yes, um, the one kilo bags of the chocolate coins, um, we're doing it twenty-five dollars a bag, which is the cost.
And is that quite a bit?
A company bag.
How much was left from Saturday?
Um.
Laura and I agreed that if council wasn't willing, we would split it.
I think there was just about a half a bag left after airway, but that was, there wasn't a lot of people out on this first one. There were sections where there was nobody, but.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, everybody, you know, the smiles are worth handing out candy.
Yeah, and like I said, some, some parades won't allow you and like next year's Spock Days won't allow it. Because the, the shriners won't come back if you throw candy.
Oh.
If you hand it out, they will. The reason being is it's not laying on the road.
Yeah, and so.
Well, that's what we did on Saturday. We handed it, we didn't throw it.
And a lot of parades are going.
And I think a lot are going that way. And then, you know, also the liability potential for some person to run that towards the float and then, um, you know. So anyway, yeah.
And we have, is there any more parades?
Yeah, I believe there's.
Just as a suggestion, you can buy the big bags of piñata filler, which has small candies and small toys. They might cost-wise go a little further.
Okay, well, it's up to you folks.
So if you were doing, say, our, our parade here, how many bags do you think we would have needed?
Well, last year for Spock Days, we had four bags. And I think we probably could have used six of the coins. But like I say, the, the piñata filler bags are significantly cheaper and I think would potentially go a little further.
Are they chunky?
Well, they're, the toys aren't spectacular, but it's got a wider variety of candy. It's got a bunch of different things instead of, I don't know, I just grabbed coins this year because it's what we did last year and it just seemed like easy.
And it was the last minute.
Yeah, it really was.
Right, was it?
Yes.
So for a town Vulcan size, we'd need about five hundred to, uh, no.
Hundred fifty dollars.
Hundred fifty dollars.
Yeah, okay.
Hundred thirty dollars.
Yeah, six bucks, yeah.
If we stuck with the coins, I mean, if we're going to do it, I can certainly do some research to see what else I can find that would be far cheaper.
Yeah, like one like that will probably end up spending five to seven hundred fifty bags at least.
I won't have time to have anything significantly enough in before we go to town.
Yeah. And, and the bad thing about sometimes too is if you don't have enough, is it better off not to have any? I mean, I'm not sure. I, I don't know if the city Calgary, I don't really remember if, if they allow you to, not that matters. But I don't think the city Calgary allows you to do any.
I don't think they do.
Candy, you know? I don't think, but I can't remember reading anything, but I'm pretty sure, but, but yeah, like you said, there is one, I, I think that we have one here that I think it's contribute.
If your view is the candy parade.
Yeah, there is called Candy Parade. So, but it's, so I think, I think it is an appropriate request or question.
And, and I guess really, uh, if council wants to go ahead with this, it's just deciding on what dollar figure.
Right.
You know, because it can be determined by the parade. There's some parades that you wouldn't take candy to and some that you would. And it's just figuring out if you want to allocate dollars to it really is what it comes down to for you guys like. And, and where you would like to draw it from. Setting the limit is the, is the key.
I'm guessing just once, we're probably looking at a thousand.
For total.
Maybe you can try that for this year?
And because it's already in the budget, you don't need a formal motion. The, the formal motion is to, to allocate a thousand dollars from, uh, council other to purchase a candy for.
And then next year we can hand out toothbrushes.
I can get them cheaper than candy.
That probably not as good though.
They probably won't be nearly as appreciated.
Yeah, it's, it's expensive, whatever you do. I know that one year we were giving out water bottles or it was a credit union or?
Yeah, I'm not sure. But anyway, so if somebody wishes to make a motion, we allocate some funds towards it, it's.
Just make the motion.
Okay.
Allocate a thousand dollars.
Paul moves to allocate a thousand dollars.
Oh, I can, I can, I, I can put a motion together for you here fairly quickly. The, sorry, uh, that council allocate a thousand dollars from the legislation, legislative portion of the twenty nineteen operation budget for the purchase of candy for parades.
You ready, Karen? Okay, so any question on Paul's motion? Hearing that, I'll call a question. And it's carried. One opposed. Okay, moving on to the, uh, town website request.
Okay, so for, um, victim services, we just put together a poster, hopefully about attracting and recruiting, um, new advocates as well as hopefully potential board members. So you'll start seeing them around town and wondering if it counts as permission? If we were to be able to send it, would it, could it be put up on the town site as well?
I don't see why not. Everybody's better. Everybody's better.
We post things, we have a community board on our website as well as the, anything that benefits the town, uh, we post for notices.
So do we need a motion on this?
You can do a formal motion, uh, we can just do it as well if you send us the information. We do that all the time for, uh, community groups that we're partnered with, so.
Awesome, and then also as well, um, I'll send to all of council and really hopefully try and sweet talk everyone to bring back to any respective agencies or committees that it might apply to or anyone that might be interested. It's an amazing, amazing committee and group to be on, it's, yeah.
Any questions on that? It's not a motion, but, but, okay. No, okay, we'll move on to committee, committee reports. Uh, we have a few there for us, there's one from Orsk, board meeting. Any questions on this one at all? Okay, any, we'll move on to the annual report, 2018. Any questions on any of the... Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the Marcus Foundation Board minutes. Again, any questions or... Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to HCSS, it's May 30th. Okay, hearing none, if somebody wished to file committee reports? Well... Any question on Lora's motion? Hearing none, call question. And that's Carrie DeNambis. Okay, moving on to council reports, Mr. Taylor.
Well, everybody else over for town hall meeting on the 17th. Golf course meeting on the 8th. And if anybody's interested, this is a report that, and not for putting in the ministry, but this is the report that Jason Schneider did of water usage at the golf course. So you'll read it after the meeting. The three-hole golf course is opening on the 30th formally. And you'll have all the minutes the next meeting. And that's all I did, but a press meeting coming up Wednesday. That's a ways away.
Any questions for Paul? Okay, move on to George Ried.
Um, I was also at the town hall meeting. We did the parade in Arrowood. Actually, it was a good turnout for this size of Arrowood.
Did you guys go around twice?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're known for that one.
Well, kind of.
But it was okay, people got double candy.
No, that's okay.
Probably why we went through so much. And, um, that was it, I didn't have any other meetings.
Okay, any other questions for George Ried? Mr. Magnuson?
I, I too attended the, the town hall meeting at the lodge call and I like that because it's a good, uh, way to connect with the public for those who showed up, meaning they had a, what, 300% improvement over last year. And plus it was a good review for myself, going over stuff with the town. Uh, I also attended, uh, went to a few different acts at the Porch Fest. Uh, and I heard good things about it. I think it was, uh, as far as I know, it was well-attended. And I also wanted to bring up the fact, uh, that Vulcan has a young lady, uh, Kiera Wardley, that's heading to the 2020 Olympics in Tokyo. Uh, she's on rugby cannabis women's sevens team. She trains in Victoria, but of course was to start here with the County Central Hawks. Uh, my source tells me that she'll be interviewed by Glenn Campbell of CTV Sports this Friday in town. And, uh, she may just be the next CTV athlete of the week.
Great.
Just want to ask that a lot because that's pretty cool.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for doing that. Any questions for Lila? Okay, if not, we'll move on to Thomas.
Okay, I had the tourism meeting and they're working on new Star Trek water bottles, working with the grocery store. And I'm sure everybody's seen our new little alien Trexie around town. Um, the completion of the float, um, some training for the summer students. There's gonna be a net and familiarization tour. Um, there's new postcards out, uh, the new painting above the door, the sign that is painted on the window, looks pretty cool. And they've done some work on the sign in the parking lot, I guess there's a new saying out there and they're looking at new Plexiglas. Uh, I went to, yeah, I get Cole Hurst and Cole Dale mixed up, the one on the other side of what, for a library board basics, uh, course. And they kind of just went over the basics on the legislation, regulations, how the grant funding is divided up. Um, I was also at the town hall meeting, um, in the Arrowood parade and I had a library meeting. We went, we had, uh, somebody request if we could get a sewing machine that they could lend out to the library. Because a lot of people that sew, as they get older, just need a little bit of mending here and there, so they're looking at that. We're looking at reviewing our plan of service more frequently just to kind of make sure we're on track. And with the library board part of us, some of us went to the new library downtown Calgary yesterday and it is amazing. If you get a chance, check it out, there's, it's, I don't even know what to say, it's just awesome. The way they've got everything divided up with the kids and it goes up around the outside of the building from the little kids all the way up to teens around the other side of that floor. But it just, everything just flows, it's wonderful.
Any questions for Laura? Okay, it was not...
Um, I apologize, this is gonna need a lot because I was being able to attend less meetings. Um, so if you're out, let's start the meeting too. Um, on the 13th, we did, uh, Lori Lick and myself did all of the, um, ribbons, so hopefully everyone got a chance to kind of look at downtown, down Wayne Street. Um, it was Domestic Violence Awareness Week, so for it, we put a couple ribbon and then also with awareness information for elder abuse on one side, on the other, um, our community contact information. Um, got absolutely amazing feedback from it, really, really good reception, um, so that was really great. On the 13th, um, with Lorna, went to the South Grove AGM in Clarisom, uh, which I think had a lot of really great content for it. Um, I had the town hall as well on the 17th. On the 18th, had my elder abuse awareness meeting. And already, the victim services program manager, who her, her position is already full-time and already quite tax, but she's already receiving referrals and inquiries about cases in Vulcan. So that's kind of just, just an idea of how much this may be needed in our community. And it's funny, like, I compare Vulcan quite a bit to Clarisom, even though there's different, each community has its own different flavors and our own different culture. But, like, they averaging anywhere between 11 to 22 cases a month, which is huge. And that's, or sorry, pardon me, that's, um, inquiries and referrals, sorry, so not all of those are cases, but inquiries and referrals. And I'm sure a lot of that is, because they've been around for just over a year now and it has tapered off. But just hearing that's kind of alarming, so hopefully it's, if this is a needed service in our community, um, the program was really well and fits Vulcan. Um, they've got a lot of really good support from the community coordinator who put all this together and started it. And she has a lot of really good, um, connections and resources and leverage. At the meeting, a big part of it was an in-depth discussion and taking back to the, um, committee, everything that the town had discussed. And really trying to look for different creative collaboration opportunities, um, creative and realistic solutions. So there's still a couple of things that, we had some ideas, now it's really checking into the realistic side of it and hey, can we do this? This sounds great, but, you know, realistically, can we do it this way? So hoping to save, you know, as much funds as possible for any, um, community aspect involved. So, pardon me, um, and then the 19th, I had gone up to Stettler for the Provincial Chamber of Commerce Roundtable, uh, which was really, really great. A gal, Tracy Acorn, from the provincial chamber, um, she's the one that goes around and does a lot of these roundtables and actually does a lot of the board training. So hopefully she'll be coming down to do some with our board being so new as well, which is really exciting. An incredibly, incredibly knowledgeable gal, a great resource. Um, it, it was mostly centered around kind of the benefits awareness, there's a lot of changes that are happening, um, in the insurance and sort of having that education portion with updates. And also it was a really great opportunity to have a whole bunch of people in the room from all different parts of the province with all different types of experience and be able to have that roundtable of, okay, here's the challenges in every different community, here's some of the different, because a lot of them are the same, right? And to hear those resources and how this community, you know, creatively solves this problem. And well, this one thought of it this way, so it was a really valuable experience. On, yeah, earlier today, it's been a long day, um, victim services meeting, went through and got all of the, Lori did up the posters, batch them off, sent them out. And we got our new executive and the paperwork kind of done and stuffed with that after our elections in ATM, which were just... They don't have on here, but were two and a half weeks ago. And, oh, and then also there were some policy updates and the policy committee status, um, because they're still going through and the policy committee is having an hour meeting previous to our regular victim services meeting. So because of all the changes and everything else, we're actually going through all the policies, cover to cover and updating everything. So just bunch of housekeeping. And then also as an aside, um, on Wednesday at 6:00 PM is the Community Futures AGM. If anybody is interested, it's at the Community Futures Building in Opa-Doakes. So let me know if, you know, wants to come or if you're interested, and that's it.
Okay, any questions for Michelle?
I'm sorry, I lied, that's not it. Um, this has nothing to do with my work, but just as an aside, on June 29th, um, one of the members of the chamber has one of the project managers in Milo on their brand new restaurant. But they tore down the old one, built a new restaurant off-site, removed it on there. June 29th, they're having a Seacube Pizza Party as a grand reopening. So if anyone's interested or would have you to go to that, there's also the... Sorry, can you just hurry?
Okay. Any questions? No, we'll move on to council and town.
Um, as Mr. Jalen mentioned, I went to South Grove to the AGM, I wrote the date down. Uh, South Grove now falls under the new Ministry of Economic Development, Trade and Tourism. Uh, we had, um, our guest speaker was for custom cannabis, Jeff Nielsen, and they've been, I believe, six years in the process of getting it going. And they thought they would have their first plants within two or three weeks that they're actually putting in there. And he was mentioning how they chose a spot in southern Alberta. Um, and one, and Michelle might help me out here, one was a dedicated zoning, electricity and water, and there was the fourth one. And I can't remember that they went into some communities and right away they knew that they couldn't do it. And in some places they weren't accepted either. Um, the one thing I found quite interesting, because someone asked him how he had, uh, how they raised the money. And he said he had raised the investment of 25 million through friends and family. So, I don't have a family like that and/or friends, I guess, anyway. And, uh, then I went to the elder abuse awareness meeting, not as a town councillor, actually, I was there making lunch, but I stayed to hear it too. And there were about 10 people from the public, so it was, um, part of the presentation was the same as Ruth gave to us. But in this presentation also, they did some scenarios, which I think maybe at some point it would be good for the council to see because that kind of almost put a different spin on it and at least it did for me. Um, I went to the town hall meeting. Um, I also attended quite a few of the Porch Fest, which I thought there was quite a diversity and anything I attended was absolutely excellent and really amazing for such a small town. So I think that's for the Recreation Committee to be thanked for putting on that. And then I have Marcus Foundation this week and the Vulcan County Health and Wellness Foundation. And that one will be a little sad as one of our board members was killed this week, so, and that's it.
Okay.
Oh, and just one more thing, if anyone's interested too is the South Grove Annual Report. I don't know if everyone got a, an email with this attached or not, but if anybody wants to read it, we can pass it around.
Okay, any questions for Lorna? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to me, I guess. Um, I've been to hospital building committee meeting and there's another one this week. Um, and then I was at the town hall meeting with everybody else and I'd like to thank everybody for attending. Unfortunately, or I'm not sure whether the format should be changed or not, but all I did was talk. Um, I'm not sure if you guys like that format, but we have tried different formats in the past, but, um, anyway, this is a little kind of stuck with and if you want to change it, so, it's something that we can consider, that's for sure. Uh, I, I do appreciate, um, the administration's work and getting it all together, you know, and more or less like we had said before, it, it all flows from what we normally deal with on a monthly basis or weekly basis, or a two-weekly basis when we go to council. So it does have that nice flow to it, so I'd like to thank the administration for doing that. Uh, I was at the pool committee meeting and, um, it's coming right along. Um, they're tidying up the design and, and hoping to have the design already so that they can go for, um, another level of pricing. Let's see what the pricing's gonna come in with, but it's looking, it's coming together pretty good. Uh, I had to say what executive and, uh, it was all in camera, um, because if there was, um, on the side of an agreement for engineering and an agreement with, uh, you know, from foreign financing. So it was all in camera. But this week coming up, I do have a waste meeting on Wednesday night and a joint use on Wednesday afternoon. It was supposed to be Thursday because of the funeral, um, we had to change it. And then on, uh, Thursday, there'll be a hospital building committee meeting in the morning. Um, and then like Paul had said, there's a golf course grand opening for the Par Three on Saturday or Sunday?
Sunday.
So I'm not sure what time that is, but we'll find out for that. Anyway, um, that's pretty well it, I did jam out of going to the Arrowood Parade. Um, I appreciate the ones that did go. Uh, I had mentioned to, to Lila that we kind of should maybe contemplate, you know, try to divide and conquer so that we send at least a couple councillors to every parade, but, um, not, you know, send them all to one, if we can kind of divide and conquer. So I, I see that on the email that Bonnie had sent out that, you know, Lila and a couple have sent back of when they, which ones they could attend. And so I think we should try and do that if we can and so that we can divide and conquer if we can, the majority of them, so that there's at least somebody. So you guys walked the whole route pretty well?
Well, most of it.
And then you'd sit down, does, does that work not too bad?
Yeah, it worked pretty good. Once there was no people left, it was the last stretch to park, then we just rode.
Yeah, yeah, no, and once we get the, the, the new signs are on, was it? So once we get the new signs and kind of figure out where we're gonna have a seat, well, then we'll put some seat belts on too so that if you feel uncomfortable, you can, you know, um... if you feel uncomfortable, you can, you know, um.
My deck is very slippery.
Pardon me?
Deck is very slippery, and even if you don't use the seatbelt, you've got something to hang on to.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, it's gonna take some tweaking, um, I, I know that, um, there was some comment about, you know, that they had some issues with, uh, in our parade, with the way it ran, but I didn't realize they did, um, but, um, anyway, if we, if we have issues, I guess we need to make sure that it goes back and we can get them.
Toilet with the town truck worked very well, apparently.
Oh, okay, oh, that's good. Yeah, he, he left plenty early, so he should have been able to make it into Calgary.
He said he could cruise at a hundred K.
And, and, because I think he left here at seven, and so, I would think that he got there in time to, for the parade. But, uh, yeah, I'm not sure about the bathroom, he probably had to leave the next, or night before. But anyway, it's, it's, I really appreciate Keith taking the time to, to go, and he says he really quite enjoys it, so. Anyway, anything that, any questions for me? Okay, if somebody wished to move the council report, verbal council reports. Okay, I'll pick Laura, so. It was Laura that had her head up, I think, first before Laura, so.
Okay, it's good for you.
Anyway, any questions on Laura's motion? Here and none, I'll call a question. I, I saw that.
Trying to be cool.
You just salute that, or?
Yeah. Okay, there we go, it's carried out, it's a hard habit to break some of this stuff, yeah.
Just came nowhere.
Okay, we'll move on to the activity reports, so Kim has supplied us with that.
As you can see, uh, majority of the things from the last meeting were taken care of, except for the, uh, cost estimates for, and obviously the local improvement, because that will have to wait till we actually have dollar figures that we can plunk into that, so that, that will set for, uh, most likely a month or so while we put that information together. Other than that, the majority is back to the beginning, so.
Uh, the one with Dr. Brown, has that been confirmed, or?
It has, so.
And we have a date?
It is, it is July twenty-second, and the letters have been sent out to all of the groups, and we just finally today received the information about, uh, the project that we're going to also send out, so. I will, uh, make sure that council has a invite to that, and again, we'll do that one. As we mentioned before, will be before a council meeting, so we'll do it at the lodge hall, and as soon as it's finished, we're gonna have to right back here for seven o'clock to have a regular council. So they can't take more than two hours, because there'll be five to seven, so.
Okay, I think he was just, well, in Edmonton, he was about an hour, I think, and when he was down here, he was maybe an hour or two.
Yeah.
He was a little rest with the hour, I think.
We'll try to keep it close to an hour, so that you can get back for your council meeting, you know.
Okay, anything else on Kim's activity report? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the it, CEO's report.
So, really, just been straightforward, uh, majority of the business things that are noteworthy on there, as we're still working with Mark Murphy for emergency management plan, we actually received a draft of it, uh, a bit yesterday's. Uh, so I started reading it over today, it's, uh, very thorough, so we have a meeting on the ninth for it. Uh, we executed the ad vote agreement for the, uh, the use after council talked about at the last meeting, so they're gonna move forward there. Actually into the permit phase, and it will be going to the M P C on the sixteenth of next month. Uh, we met with North and Company, uh, for some advice on that, on the HUMIC, and, uh, they're actually looking at, uh, they would like to do a, uh, similar agreement to what's in other community sort, actually having North and Company put together an agreement for purchase of land with K D F, that, uh, the land can be possibly, if not developed on, after certain grid, gets turned back into the town's name, and that's kind of the model we're going with right now. The majority of Richard Steves, uh, received a complaint from our favorite person in, uh, Milo about the movie that's in the, uh, in the pool, that it can be dangerous, so we dealt with that with over help, letting them know that, um, we have extra staff, those sort of things, just making sure that everything's on the up and up with that. Who else is worth noting on there? Uh, I did, after, uh, the elder abuse meeting, I did have a conversation with Ruth, and provided through with some, uh, some other information from council, and, uh, and next meeting, and yeah, other than that, uh, you guys will all have a chance to read it, so if there's anything there that you do have questions for, please feel free to ask, but other than that, it's been pretty straightforward. Talk to me, wow.
It's not on here, but I'm assuming you're the person to ask, that we're all going to, for that, by the time do we have to be there?
I'll have Bonnie send out the information for, uh, where the staging area is, that sort of thing, for everybody.
Parade up till eleven.
It's, yeah.
So, and we need to be there now, or?
No, it, uh, well, it does say for our towns can sneak in, but if we want to be judged, we have to be there earlier, because if it's like Calgary's too, quite often the judging needs to take place with people that are gonna be a part of it, because that's part of the flow.
The, the green girl's not there, they don't get the experience of the floor, so.
I'm not sure if she's, she gonna go?
I believe she is, yeah, I'm gonna believe that, so, uh.
So we'll find out.
We'll have everything sent out before.
Do you have lots of people going to Mount?
Well, I, I, Joan and I, I think are gonna go, and Paul's had said, and Lyle and Georgie, and so, so we'll have a good.
Oh, okay, because I didn't know if I could go, but if there wasn't enough. If you were sure, I could try and be there, but if there's lots, I'll leave it. Although that would be the nicest one to go to.
Well, it's, it's a, you know, we've never been to Mount, it'll be a different one for our, our group, and it's unfortunately, or fortunate, whichever you want to say, it's the farthest away, you know, that our float will have gone, um.
It's going to be the biggest task for towing it for all of those things, because it's the furthest away. Okay. I'll haul through the mountains.
Yeah.
Well, you have to buy a, a parts.
Part pass. That'll be interesting, going through the part pass area, I think he'll probably have to go through the
It's good.
You approach, you approach around the side, yeah.
And then, and then park, and then come back, I would assume, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, should try and coordinate that with, with, um, him, so that we could maybe deal with that.
Yeah, well, we'll try to see if we can make arrangements so that he doesn't get on up there.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Okay, here and none more questions, somebody wish to move the administration reports? Uh. Thank you, Lyle, any question on Lyle's motion? Here and none, I'll call a question. And it's carried out, so. Okay, no one in camera, adjournment. Okay, Michelle, any question on Michelle's motion? Here and none, all in favor? Oh. There's a question coming up.
Oh, I checked out already?
Oh.
I didn't, I didn't.
I says voting in progress, and I almost put it in the top.
I haven't, don't have it, so. Just because I called it wrong, right, I am in favor of going for it. There, thank you. Okay, Michelle, did you notice last time we almost couldn't leave, because we weren't sure.
Nobody knew how to end the meeting.
I thought of that, my heart went out.
You want to? Anyway, thank you very much, everybody, and, um. Just back to you, Paul.
It's candy or battery.
Eighty-six percent.
Candy or battery.
I got eighty, I got sixty-eight, because I started off with less than eight hours left.
I'm still trying to. Sorry, eleven hours.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I, I know that it, it is, it's a strange one, because if I don't shut it down right, sometimes it opens up, it's still awake.
Once the truck is great, you just get a really high charging.
Yeah, well, I know, I mean, that's what I'm saying, that I'm a bad battery.
Completed.